Okay, good evening and welcome back to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen's Meeting for October 17th, 2017. We started the meeting at 6:00 and immediately went into executive session.
6:30.
Uh, 6:30, that's right.
Six thirty.
The rest of them all showed up at 6:00 because they thought it was then. Now, they got me thinking I did too. We started at 6:30, went into executive session, and came out of executive session a couple of minutes ago. So, we're going through the regular portion of the meeting now, just getting a couple of things out of the way. First up, could we do the appointments of the library trustees? These people came in last week, but we didn't have it on the agenda, but we interviewed them during that time.
Make a motion to appoint Deanne E. Barnar, 98 Edge Water Drive, Wareham, Mass., to the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Okay, motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. It's unanimous.
Next, make a motion to approve Linda Jackson, 14 Morris Avenue, Wareham, Mass., to the Board of Library Trustees for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion to appoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that's also unanimous, 4-0-0. Uh, let's see, I'll let you get those going.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, the OBA, I doubt there's anybody gonna come in for that. Would there be? This is just routine.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, do we have that file in front of us? Just get that done. It's not like it's anything anybody's gonna comment on.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to provide a permit to Onset Bay Association in care of Millie Barrows for Union Ave Onset for the use of the Onset bench, shell, and bluffs to close off a portion of Union Ave for the following truck full of fun. Street painting festival, August 25th, 2018, rain date, August 26th, 2018, timeframe is 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All the paperwork's in order, and all the sign-offs are here as well.
Second.
Okay, motion to allow the use of town property by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 4-0-0. We're gonna hold off on B because that gentleman, I believe, is coming in to talk to us. Let's see. Why don't we do announcements?
Okay. Okey-dokeys.
You don't have a long list from Whiteside?
Can accept it.
Good. Selectman Tropiano?
We don't have a list for her. Oh, my goodness gracious. This should go very quick then, shouldn't it?
One would hope.
All right, so, as you guys know, I was, uh, I've been talking to the superintendent in Onset, and they're setting up a meeting for us. They're trying to get us on, um, the next meeting, but they'd have to squeeze it in, see if they can get it on there. If not, it's gonna be the next one, which will be August, uh, November 6th, okay? And they have to have it, and they're gonna have to have a posted meeting, because remember, there's only three of them.
Yeah.
So, only one could meet with us, and that won't work.
Right.
All right, so, uh, so, November 6th will be the drop-dead date that we'll be going. If not, it'll be, um, a week, not this week, next week.
Next week.
All right? So, I'll let you know for sure. He's gonna call me back.
Okay.
Uh, he talked to me today, and he said he'd call me back and just see if they could get it in. If they can't, then they could do it November 6th.
You and Alan would be attending that meeting?
Just me and Alan, yeah.
Yep, good.
Uh, you know, I just want the board to be aware of it.
Yep.
Okay?
Good, thanks for the outreach.
And, uh...
Okay with that date?
Um, there's a push-on by some pediatric doctors to, um, sort of try to take charge of this opioid crisis. Um, I have some paperwork, I'm gonna bring it in, I don't happen to have it with me tonight, but I'll bring it in next week. And there's quite a bit of information that they're, they're trying to, you know, it's time. I mean, this is, you know, as we all know, we found out recently that it looks like that they've been dragging their feet in, uh, in the federal government level on this whole opioid thing. And, you know, people are dying, and, you know, everybody drags their feet because of a dollar. And, you know, I'm really tired of it, frankly. But, um, I hope that, uh, you know, we keep putting the push on this, uh, here at our meetings and, and whatever we have to send in any direction. The other thing was, is I, um, Alan, you, you mentioned that, uh, oh, the signs for the railroad. I almost forgot about that.
UI glasses at a right angle.
Aren't they bad?
Yes.
Yeah, I know they're broken. I'll take 'em off. All right, so, remember, if you remember, I don't, I think I brought some pictures in...
You did.
...that showed, um, the railroad crossings in, in a town, and it said that, uh, there was a sign in a circle, and it says, "No horns used," okay, at the railroad crossing. And I asked Alan to check into it, because, you know, that's sort of what Alan does. And, uh, he couldn't get any information about how we go about having that happen, because, you know, we have that problem when you go through Hathaway and down that way with them blowing the whistles at all times, and, and it's not just a little, oh, whoo, whistle. I mean, it's considerable. And it's annoying for the people who live down there. And somebody said, "Well, it's a law, you gotta blow the whistle." Well, apparently, it isn't, because the, uh, Cohasset has it, so they can't blow 'em at any of theirs. Now, they must've done something to make that happen. This gentleman over here is raising his hand. Can you enlighten us, Mr. Town Council?
Do you have permission, Mr. Chairman? Yes. Um, what you do is you file a train whistle petition with DPU. Yeah. And DPU reviews it, uh, and then holds a hearing. Uh, I can tell you, I've done a bunch of these.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, it's a mini-trial. You present your evidence as to why you think that the train whistle shouldn't be sounded. DPU considers the testimony, weighs it against what it thinks public safety issues might be, and, in my experience, they'll, if you come in with half a dozen spots where you want it, uh, done away with, a lot of times, they'll, uh, split the baby and give you three, and then keep three.
I think it's only just the one area, really, that's in the neighborhood. The rest is outside of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
One's in the commercial zone on one side, and the other one is in the commercial zone on the other side, which is downtown Wareham. I mean, that, you could probably say, "Well, all right, I mean, it's, it's downtown, there's not too much residents nearby there." The other one is, the other one really is the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood, which is in the Hathaway area in there, which is really a residential zone. You know, that's sort of where, and, I mean, maybe we have others, I don't know, I really haven't identified it. Maybe we should identify it, but I think we should do that.
Well, they, I know they, they blow at Depot, they blow at Indian Neck, uh, they blow at Sandwich Road, and they blow at Elm Street as well.
So, we should...
Every crossing that...
So, we should try to, uh, maybe we could get somebody to identify these, and, uh, maybe we could, you know, start the process and see if we can at least get the areas that are in the neighborhoods. I don't, you know, nobody cares about the areas that are in the commercial zones, okay, it's fine, you know, they're whatever.
And the earliest one used to be off 6:00 in the morning, and now the earliest train is about 7:30. So, it's better, it's not going off at 6:00.
Yeah.
But that, you know, a few years ago, they were 6:00 o'clock.
But, you know, if you live along that track and you're in the residential, and some of them are right next to the house.
Yeah.
I mean, that's gotta make you, it's gotta...
Probably getting shaken out of bed by the train anyway.
It's gotta be shaking you pretty good. And remember, there was only one trash train before. Now, once a day, you know, one way and then the other way, that was all you got. Now, you get the flyer going through there, and it's like, whoa, you know? So, and, and at some point, maybe we'll get an actual train going through.
Yeah.
And maybe we should just confront this now. Uh, I'd like to see if the board would entertain that anyway.
Yeah, I reached out to DOT, to the, actually, to the Director of Mass. DOT Rail, and the suggestion basically was that, as a town, we need to apply for that, which is what Rich is talking about.
I think we should set Rich loose.
If you want, we can do it on the 48 Hours for the Board to vote to authorize Rich, or we can just make...
No, I think we need a little more looking into it.
It's really not an emergency.
Not a 48-hour thing, it's been going on for a hundred years, so I don't think we can say it's an emergency.
No.
For the agenda for next week, huh?
Yeah. But maybe you could put it on the agenda next week, and, uh, the week after, whatever.
Next week, we got town meetings, so we're gonna keep it short, so the week after...
First week in the month.
That's fine.
Yeah, take a look at it.
That's fine, and then we, get 'em identified, give it to Rich, let's get it done, and, you know, go from there.
Yeah.
I know we'll make the people in the neighborhoods very happy, trust me.
Yeah.
So, that's for Halloween, the Halloween agenda.
Yeah, I just wasn't able to get it done by a simple phone call.
That's fine, you know, I appreciate you looking in, Alan, really honest. I appreciate you doing it.
Peter.
Yep.
Uh, just quickly, because I know you're gonna take it up at a later date, but just for, for those in the neighborhoods that would be interested in this kind of thing, their testimony would be important in Boston, one that was an actual hearing.
I'm sure you could get plenty of residents that were willing to testify. You know, Doug Hale, it goes right next to his house.
Well, we could notice a hearing and do it here, too.
Little league from his door.
We could also do it that way.
Yeah.
Notice a hearing and do it here.
Well, deep...
Well, that would allow people to speak to the board, we could take that input and condense it, send it up to them.
That's an idea, yeah.
Slight easier than people driving to Boston.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, let's, uh...
Then I'll, I'll get it published and notice as a hearing.
If you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's all I have.
It'll probably push it past the 31st, because, you know, you're gonna get a 14-days notice of hearing and all that stuff, but...
That's all I have.
Yep. What you got?
Uh, not too much. Again, want to mention to everybody that Nora Bickie has set up a website, Wareham, What's Going On site. It's listing constantly all the events around Wareham. Uh, the site is kept up-to-date. Once an event is gone, it's taken off. Um, I'm gonna, again, ask probably at Town Hall if, uh, our ITS manager could put a link for the people, if they go through the town, they can pick up a link and get to it as well. Uh, there's a mattress sale, I think, uh, it's the end of this week, uh, at the Deca School. The trunk-or-treat that I mentioned last week at Lopes Field on the 31st by the Onset Four Square Church is from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock. I wasn't able to see the sign there. Also, on that website, there's the YMCA and at least three other organizations doing Halloween events for kids, which is kind of a nice thing to have happen. And that's all I've got today.
Okay, October 28th at Eastern Bank at 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. is the Halloween Spooktacular, featuring Cranberry Coast Concert Series artists. Uh, there'll be music, dance, tapas from El Mariachi and a cash bar, 21 and over. Tickets are $30 per person or $50 per couple, and they're available at Music of the Bay on Cranberry Highway in East Wareham, and also the Gallery Consignment Shop on Main Street. Uh, so, that's a Saturday night, so that sounds like an interesting occasion, and I think that's all I have as well.
Mr. Chairman, we did, we did receive a pretty interesting one that I'd like to put on the website, too, from the Greater New Bedford, um, workforce board. So, they're having an upcoming free training program for residents of New Bedford and adjoining towns, which includes Wareham, that are unemployed or underemployed. They're recruiting now job seekers age 21-plus. If you're serious about a job manufacturing and you need skills to help with your job, you're encouraged to go to the New Bedford Career Center. That's at 618 Acushnet Avenue to register for the training. Eligible candidates will have the opportunity to earn credits and credentials and gain entry-level skills that many manufacturing employers need, putting you on track to securing employment. Participants will learn Level 1 and 2 skills with MIG-TIG welding component. Training starts in mid-November for five weeks. The training providers are the Massachusetts Manufacturing Extension Partnership, Bristol Community College, Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School, the Career Center. Most training takes place at the Quest Center for Innovation, which is at 1213 Purchase Street, and it's during daytime hours. Seats are limited, so please sign up.
Okay. All right, any other announcements? Okay, we haven't done the pledge of allegiance yet, so let's...
Marilyn.
Marilyn, why don't you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next up, citizens' comments. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board tonight? Welcome back from your 50th anniversary tour of about half the battlefields in the country and whatnot.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm Claire Smith, Town Moderator. I just want to remind the voters that next Monday is town meeting. We now have a zero quorum, so people should be mindful that we no longer have to wait for people to come into the auditorium and take account. We can begin exactly at 7:00, which is my intention of doing, so that we can get started immediately. But I would like to encourage people to come early and pick up the warrant. There are 100 pages in the addendum of supporting information for all of the warrant articles. I think it's 84 pages, but a lot of pages.
Yeah, this is a fair amount of additional information as well.
There are a lot of reading to be done, and it's quite extensive. I want to thank Mr. Sullivan, the Finance Committee and your board, you know, for putting all that information together and making it available to people, because I think it's very comprehensive. But generally, people come, and it's, they sit there, and it's the first time they've seen it, they are not going to be able to read it in 30 seconds or less. So, I would suggest that they come early at 6:30, pick up a town warrant, and come in and sit and relax, catch their breath, and go through it. There is a tremendous amount of information that explains the articles, substantiates the reasons, you know, for or, or against the articles, and so I would urge people and the voters and hope that the press might put a note in the paper that they should probably plan on getting there at 6:30, or, uh, go on the town website and see if they can find the addendum.
Yeah, I think we'll try to get a link to it. Uh, we just got it, but we'll try to get a link to it on the main page of the town website, so people could just go there and click and, and read it ahead of time, because it is quite comprehensive.
Yeah, this, they're using a new, uh, new printer. Usually, we got an electronic copy in the past, so I haven't seen that so far, so...
Yeah, well, even if we have to scan it in, we should, we should still get it up there if we have to.
Yeah.
Derek, I have a PDF of the addendum, I can send it to, uh, Matt.
Yeah, 'cause it's, um, a lot.
It is a lot. I saw it, and I went, "Wow."
Must be a PDF for it somewhere.
Yeah, it's the original PDF that would've been sent for him. I think that's what we're gonna try and put up. We want to have it in the printers format, but...
Yeah, that went to the printer, but I have a copy of it.
I'd rather get the info out.
Yep, so we can work on that tomorrow. We look forward to seeing everybody at town meeting.
And just keep in mind that technically, it only has to be the clerk and myself. We can be there alone and take care of the meeting.
And wouldn't that be quite a vote of confidence if it was just the two of you?
I don't know, I'd be a little nervous, but, uh...
We're gonna have it out, uh, front on the marquee, and then it's well on the electronic billboard on Grand Bay Highway.
So, I look forward to Monday night, and, like I said, I'm very impressed by this year's warrant, very impressed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Should anybody else would like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing no one, much to my surprise. Uh, let's move down to Item 7B on the agenda. Request from Poor Garden for a one-day liquor license for Saturday, November 11th, 2017, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. So, come on up. If you could just, I, I've known about your, your plans to do an event out there for a while, but if you could just explain in general terms to the board what you're looking to do out of the Tremont Nail Factory on the evening of November 11th.
Hi, my name's Eric Christiansen from Poor Garden. The, um, Pop Warner parents have asked me to produce an event for their fundraiser, which will be on November 11th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. The idea was to utilize the freight building, which I believe has been used in the past for some entertainment, um, but the area that's in front of it, running parallel, we were gonna put a tent in front there. Roughly 40 feet is our span, so depending on the size, I think we were looking to put a 30-foot tent there, have the beer garden there, and I also have a food truck. The parents would congregate in the tent, and then we would also have entertainment in the freight building itself.
Okay, so, um, the, the, there'll be some kind of way to maintain them in the tent with the alcohol?
So, the idea is to really use that as our corded area.
So, is you can't, they can't be walking around into the buildings and everything else with alcohol in their hand?
Exactly. So, the freight building, they would actually be going into the freight building with the alcohol, but nowhere else beyond the freight building and the tent.
You would need to cordon off the area, uh, down near where the ramp is to get into the freight building. Uh, you'd need to cordon it off by stringing something along to the, to the middle building there, and then you would need to do the same sort of thing up above, so that people couldn't exit that area.
What's gonna happen in the freight building?
So, we were gonna have music in the freight building. And we do actually have police officers that are members of the family. We have, um, Matt Apoisit, we have Marion, and Rochester.
Yeah, but that's, that doesn't help us. That doesn't help us, we, we'd have our own police officers if that was necessary, and I'm not sure that...
Yeah, I don't think it is necessary, I know for the, for the...
That's the problem. It's just that typically, we make the area defined whenever we allow them on town property...
Yep.
...that sort of cordons it off and keeps it restricted, so that they're just not walking all over the place. Because people could easily walk off the property, they can walk here and there, and you never want that. That's just a problem that can be a problem.
Completely understand, and I've done a number of festivals over the years. I would say that the Falmouth Fairgrounds would be a good example of courting off the area. They do have a, a massive building, the Market Building on the site, so typically, we'll run parallel to that building and have everybody stay in that confined area.
As long as it's cordoned off, so that, you know, that's, has to be part of the requirements.
Yep.
That they keep the areas cordoned off.
That's fine. Selectman Scaziotti?
That's good.
Any questions?
All the paperwork's in order.
Yep. No, uh, and I know that Eric's been working a lot with, uh, Ken Buckland, Director of Planning and Community Development on this. Uh, you know, I'm glad you, you've, uh, got the, uh, one of the concerns we always have with events is how, how long the taps are open, and I'm glad you got it down to about a five-hour window, because that's in keeping with what we've done with other festivals in town, including the Oyster Festival, the Blues Festival, and so on and so forth. So, uh, we're glad to get another event out there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's fine. I mean, alcohol is, unfortunately, it's, it can be a good thing, and it can be a bad thing if it's not taken care of properly.
Yep. Any other questions?
Seven. Make a motion to, uh, for Poor Garden LLC, 17 Sleepy Hollow Drive, Plymouth, Mass. The above-named nonprofit organization is hereby granted a special license for the sale of wines and malt beverages to be drunk on the premises under Chapter 138, Section 14 of the Liquor Control Act. It will be Saturday, November 11th, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., to be held at Tremont Nail Factory, Freight Building, you know, in front of the Freight Building at 5 Elm Street, Wareham, Mass., for a fundraiser.
Okay.
Second.
Motion?
Yeah, just add the cordon off the area, okay?
Yep. Yeah, you define the area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. It's unanimous. Uh, you can pick this up tomorrow in the Selectman's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
We look forward to the event. Okay, next up, we have soft-shell clam regulations. Can we, can we come up with a bylaw where we don't have to vote on the same regulations every year? Will the state let us do that?
I believe we can look into it.
Okay.
I was just thinking the same thing when I was sitting back there.
Yeah, you're saying, "Why am I here every year?"
Um, you know, with the exception of changes, I, it depends on areas that are affected from the digging, so we may not want to keep those areas open, just for... It's not a very large fishery, so it's, you know, we have, I think we have four people on the list right now that can harvest this, so it's not a major, major draw to the, to the, um, to the fishery itself. One little thing that I've noted on, uh, I've noticed on the Broad Marsh River area, it says Area F. Um, I just need to make a change, that extension is no longer, we had changed extensions, so it's just a, uh, a, a change in extension. I don't think it's gonna affect the, the regulation at all. It would be Extension 3180, not Extension 3184. However, that does still go to it. That's just a...
That's easy to fix.
Just a minor, just a minor glitch.
Done.
Um, before, we had days jumping around all over the place which area they could fish, um, things of that nature. Again, it doesn't have a large draw to this fishery itself. My recommendation is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you can change it if you'd like. That was the only, uh, change I had. Before, we had a category listed stating that Areas A and B could be fished on Tuesday, this area could be fished on Wednesday, bounced around all over the place. So, now they can select the entire location, uh, those three days a week, so...
Yeah, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, sounds reasonable.
It gives a little bit of restriction to the fishery, just so it doesn't get completely depleted, and it gives a little bit of a break, um, but it gives those three days of harvest. Uh, it never harvested on Saturday or Sunday, and Sunday's closed anyway, so... Those are the only changes I have from previous years, um, and everything else is, um, set up as is. No fishing under 32 degrees, just because of freezing for sea, uh, sea shellfish, and, uh, if you have any other changes or questions on it.
Is there a time from, from two, or is it...
No, usually it's a half hour, uh, before sunrise, or sun, sunrise to a half hour after sunset.
Okay.
Okay, no, any questions?
That's fine.
Gary, uh, you've basically developed this with the input from the Commercial Fisherman as well.
This has been, actually, uh, I've added to this one. Uh, this was, this was back when we had the Shellfish Advisory Committee, and it's carried through, uh, through my predecessor, Mr. Perola, um, and I've added new locations since then.
Oh, it's been updated.
Yes, it's been updated for a more positive fishery.
Okay. Make a motion for the Commercial Softshelled Clam Regulations for the Town of Wareham, November 1st, 2017, April 30th, 2018. I'm gonna read the areas without all the detail that'll be available to Harvard, Mass.'s office. East River, Broad Cove, Area A. Muddy Cove, Area B. Wee Weanik, Area C. Onset Pier, East, Area D. Point Independence Beach, Area E. Broad Marsh River, Area F. Butler's Cove, Widow's Cove, Bass Cove, Stony Point Dyke, Area G. Shell Point Bay Management Area, Number 4. Point Dyke, area G, Shellpoint Bay Management Area, number four, and the day analysis, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, no harvesting on Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, authorized diggers, soft shell permit only issued to those who have held the Town of Wareham Commercial Permit for a minimum of one year prior to November 1st, 2017, soft shell clams shall not be, shall not be harvested when the air temperature is below thirty-two degrees Harvest limits is two level bushels per permit to be contained in a standard bushel tote as described in the general fish, shellfish regulations. Authorized equipment, the only method of harvesting soft shell crams shall be the use of rakes and plunges, the use of any type of hydraulic equipment, shovels, spades, pitchforks, or similar equipment is strictly prohibited. On general regulations, unless otherwise directed by the Shellfish Constable, all seeds shall be replanted in the immediate harvest area, all holes shall be filled properly with no seed left unspooled, the transfer of soft shell clams from one person to another or from one boat to another is prohibited, the approved areas are subject to change, closure by the Division of Media Fisheries, and are the Board of Selectmen at the recommendation of the Town of Wareham, Shellfish Constable.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the regulations by Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, next up, vote to accept a donation from CMAS Covanta to the recycling center. We have recycling coordinator here, come on up.
Okay, my name is Marilyn Russell, and I'm with Wareham Recycling, I am the coordinator, and a few months ago, we spoke with Rich O'Connor at CMAS, we keep in touch with them from time to time, because we helped them by keeping five to six hundred gallons of unwanted paint off the floor of their, the haulers definitely don't want that paint, and they don't want it over there, and we also take in mercury-bearing items, which helps keep the mercury out of the, the system, and Mitch O'Connor very gratefully offered to give us a grant, and he said that the simplest and easiest way to give us a grant would be by a credit card, and the town doesn't accept credit cards, so I set up a GoFund, GoFundMe account, where he could, they only accept credit cards, and that way too, if anyone else in town wanted to donate, they could also donate to the center, and that's it.
One question, Derek, can we put that up on the website, or is that legal?
The link to the GoFundMe?
Yeah.
We can put it as part of the recycling page.
That'd be great.
How much is the donation?
Great.
How much do they give you?
Nine hundred twenty-five dollars.
They gave us a thousand dollars, but GoFundMe takes a certain percent.
Seventy-five.
Five percent.
It's ninety, nine twenty-five net.
So it became nine twenty-five, but we could certainly use it, because we take in quite a few television sets, and the cost is exorbitant to have them picked up and recycled.
Disproposed of, yep.
And we'll certainly use it in that area.
Make a motion to accept the donation from CMAS Covanta to the recycling center in the amount of nine hundred twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept the donation from Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, it's unanimous, thank you for your solicitation and outreach to get the money.
Okay, and thank you for inviting us, and I'll just say, we're still there, Wednesdays one to three, Saturdays nine to one, our paint shed is closed, though, until May.
Okay.
We're not taking any, any more paint.
Okay.
We took in more this year than ever before, I, I don't know where it's coming from, but people bring in twenty-
There's nowhere else to take it.
Twenty, and right, one is the only other place, and you have to be a resident, and we, we took him out, five, six hundred gallons of paint.
Wow.
We found homes for some of it, but some of it just can't be reused.
Yep.
Good news is, somebody also donated five dollars anonymously, so.
There you go, we got the trend going.
Excuse me, this is my husband, Earl Russell, and he's a volunteer at the center.
Also the treasurer of the-
Earl, you can't get it, you can't get it back as an experiment, they're keeping it.
We didn't know if it would work, and we said, so.
How much, how much I could afford.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for your efforts, they're appreciated, thanks. Okay, next up, we have continued discussion, re-beach maintenance plan, do you have anything further to add on this, I was just gonna pop it onto agendas periodically, just to see where we were.
No, but we have been, there've been some interested residents asking to join the committee, and I think that this isn't a true committee, it's not like the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, we're just basically getting some of the department heads together and having meetings regarding this specific project, we appreciate the, the interest on it, and also, this is specific to town-owned beaches, not the, not private beaches and such, so.
We're not gonna maintain your private beach.
No.
No, okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next up, adoption of the forty U fines schedule.
Rich just sent a, the, the fine schedule is all the fines that we have in all of our bylaws, I think it just needs to be put in a grid, Rich just gave us a nice little motion for that, that we need to fill in, and code violations, the, they're, for code enforcement, it's three hundred dollars for the Board of Health, it's-
I think Rich could read it.
For each violation. Right.
Yeah.
Per day. Yeah, that's right, per day. Right, but that's, it's not gonna be, we don't have, we're not gonna list out, this is if, I don't know, you're, you, you have a car, and then this is if you are doing something else, I think it- You don't need to do that, you don't need to list them out like that. So, the, the way it's set up, it basically just creates a grid, and that's what we're gonna go off of, so it's a bylaw, regulations, subject, penalty, and we're gonna keep as general as possible, yeah.
If you just wanna read, if Rich just wants to read what he wrote, we could just-
Move approval.
And we move approval from that.
Right.
You need a specific motion?
He'll do it, then we'll make a motion to approve.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I've written two things, one is the motion, I move that the town accept General Laws Chapter forty U, and that the town adopt, and then Division Blank, Section Blank, we have to figure out where we're gonna plug it in.
Right.
I think at the end, but, as printed in the handout.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's your motion, and then we'll have a handout, which, the, the preface of it will be the section of the bylaws where it's going to fit, and then here's the actual substance. Section one, the procedure for payment and collection of unpaid municipal fines is set forth in Chapter forty U, the Mass General Laws is hereby adopt. Section two, the town administrator shall appoint a municipal hearing officer to conduct hearings of the alleged violations of the bylaws and regulations specified in this bylaw. Section three, the following bylaws and regulations and the specified penalties attached there too shall be included within the procedure established under this bylaw, each day a violation is committed or permitted to continue shall constitute a separate offense, may be penalized as such hereunder, then there's a grid, which identifies bylaw, regulations, subject, and penalty. Section four, notwithstanding the provisions of this bylaw, the town may enforce its bylaws and regulations or enjoin violations thereof through any lawful process, including but not limited to through non-criminal disposition as set forth in the bylaws, and the election of one remedy by the town shall not preclude the enforcement through any other lawful means. Section five, the invalidity of any section, provision, paragraph, sentence, or clause of this bylaw shall not invalidate any other section, provision, paragraph, sentence, or clause thereof, nor shall it invalidate any permit or determination that has previously been issued, and then I have an explanation, which I'll read off if I may, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty U, is a local option statute that creates an alter, an alter, I can't say the word, alternative procedure for the collection of fines relative to violations of rules, regulations, orders, and bylaws regulating housing, sanitary, and other requirements. The statute allows for this issuance of citations for certain enumerated offenses, and establishes a procedure for collection and appeal to a municipal hearing officer. The statute also allows the town to impose sanctions for failure to pay fines by restricting access to other municipal services, and by imposing liens on the subject property. So.
Well, we'll move that we accept the, the basic layout as done by Town Council, with the stipulation, the Town Council supplies the detail to the selectman's office, so we can reprint it properly.
Second.
Okay, it's on him.
It's all on him.
Okay, motion to adopt the fine schedule by Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, it's unanimous, so we just need town meeting to dot the aye, and we're done.
Yep.
Uh, next up, selectman initiative project update, who's got, who's doing what?
Well, I just talked about mine earlier, so.
Yeah, you did, okay.
Still working with Derek and Frank Gay as far as, you know, the bus stops, depending on what we're gonna do, we just confirmed that we have funded again for the Wareham, New Bedford, catch for sort of bus run for 2018, for those people who don't have the ability to drive to the hospitals, et cetera, Doc with the Fairhaven, New Bedford, and also they can go onto Fall River from there as well, I'm still working, trying to come up with an overall plan of how we work for, as I've mentioned, on a community center, which would include obviously council and aging, Boys and Girls Club, possible library, we talked a little bit to the schools with the MSBA, but we've been told the MSBA will not provide any funding outside of the two schools they're working on.
Yep.
We would be allowed to actually put something there, but it'd be all on the town side, which becomes a problem, and way from the start as far as cost, but we'll continue to work on these items there, there's several other things as far as the train goes, but the train is something that's, nothing that we as a town really can't do on our own, simply because there's so much politics, you know, involved in the whole southeast area on this, on the South Coast Rail, it's extremely difficult for us, we just have to work with our elected representatives to see what we can get done.
Yep.
But we keep trying, it's something that, long-term, is really, I think, critical for the economic development, sustainability of the whole southeast region.
Okay, thank you, anybody have any forty-eight hour business? No, 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 no.
One thing, sorry, almost forgot, I got a call from Pam Hasner from Mass DOT, District Five, kinda surprised me, she called up saying, we're getting people from the Boston office saying that the town's not interested in doing the six and twenty-eight highway project, it turns out, I guess, it's several business people, I'm not saying who or what, because I don't know, I guess in the negotiations for the easements and takings, made comments, which is where this came from, so Pam has asked that we make a motion, or whatever, or vote to have our chair write a letter to, basically Jonathan Gulliver, the Highway Administrator, and Mary Jo Perry, the District Highway Director, affirming that our vote from before that we're fully in favor of the Route six and twenty-eight highway project, so we ask that we do that.
That's fine, just, just by way of background, when they started this project, they soon realized that there were going to be over three hundred land takings, moving of signs, easements, and everything else, pretty much every single property along the stretch where they're doing construction is, would be impacted in some way or another, so this is no surprise, what is surprising to me is that apparently a few disgruntled people called up the state, and they seem to think that this is what we, that we have a problem with it too, which nothing could be further from the truth, so.
So moved, I mean, if you need a motion, I'll-
Yep.
-move it, can we send that a letter?
Yeah, I'll get that out.
Okay, second it.
Okay, motion, send the letter by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scaziatiati, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, get that out this week.
Let's see addresses.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, town administrators report, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to update the board on the law of unintended consequences, which would be the advertising on the Big Belly Solar Trash Compactors, we're coming into sort of a new realm on that, and just wanna let everybody know that when it comes to advertising, we're looking for basically simple things, businesses and such, political ads would not be something we'd be interested in from, from any perspective, and, you know, nor anything what you'd call controversial, we're just looking, you know, especially, I'd love to have local businesses be able to benefit from it, so our first, you know, one of the people that, one of the entities actually that donated money, they've had some advertising up for the festival and such, we had somebody, and I appreciate their offer, coming in to, to potentially rent the ad space, if you will, but we're unable to do that, it's, it's political, and actually, it's against our zoning bylaw that doesn't allow political signs on town property.
You're welcome.
So, just a heads up to everybody, and I appreciate it.
Something good out of the signed bylaw.
Not all bad.
Took four years, but hey, we're there.
Whatever you say.
Uh, let's see, liaison initiative reports.
I-
You did your thing earlier, yep.
We're good.
What do you got?
Oh, yeah, let's see. Community Events Committee is in the process of redoing the explanation of how and what we financed, et cetera, clear up some of the language, because we had two different documents, and they didn't really completely agree, so we're in the process, I'll have a, I think on our next meeting, we'll have a, an actual formal draft that we'll clean up and be ready to go, we'll start taking applications the end of January for the coming year, which is really good, because there was some confusion, it's basically gotta be nonprofit organizations, that's what we're supposed to be, but it's got a lot cleared now, Planning Board last night affirmed the solar bylaw, which I don't know if we're gonna have to, when we meet before the town meeting, to vote, you know, for or against, I don't think we did anything with that at the time, because we didn't have any information, but they've updated it last night, and these are the latest changes.
So what you have is not what's in here?
I don't-
So we're gonna have to have that as a handout available at town meeting next to this.
You can check and see, but this was just on-
There's gonna be, there's, there should be a couple, because you're gonna need the capital plan and one handout.
Right, okay.
That's, and actually, we might wanna try and work to, with Ken to give one handout, because there's so much-
You want two?
Paper.
Yeah.
I got two here together, if you want, I think what you'll find is on this, that there's still maybe possible some glitches in here, because we just reviewed last night, but basically, we need something in place, you know, I blame myself, and, you know, basically, I blame us as selectmen for not getting this done a long time ago, we didn't have a town planner, I'm not gonna use that as an excuse, but what's happened is, we had, last night, one, two, three, we had six items come in on the planning board meeting, four from Blue Wave, two from Makepeace, on six parcels of land, I'm not sure how many hundreds, well over a hundred acres of land, for potential solar projects, and what they did is, they applied for A and R's, which is approval not required, and what that does is, it locks in those pieces of property for potential solar projects later, and the reason they're doing this is because the new solar bylaw is trying to restrict large-scale projects to, I think it's I-130, and what they're doing is, by locking in certain land that may not qualify in those areas, now they're, they're grandfathered in.
Yep.
So, this is a consequence of us not being proactive.
Hold on a second, Rich, I gotta ask Rich a question, how does an A and R lock in a zoning bylaw?
Location, all the-
It doesn't. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with it, an A and R, if you file a plan that you're gonna put on an A and R, then it does, because the, the clock starts now-
That's what they do.
-kind of thing, but what they, they have to literally file the plans, you can't just, an A and R is just Planning Board approval not required, that's not a plan, that, that's, there's no, there's no, that doesn't lock anything in.
I'm not explaining it clearly enough, it's an A and R where they submitted the plan for the land itself.
But did they submit a plan for a solar field?
No.
So then they don't have a grandfather on the solar bylaw.
I think it's the location that they're locking in.
Doesn't work that way.
Well.
I don't believe, I might be wrong.
But they had two lawyers there, I don't think they were wrong.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the-
They got a third.
Yeah.
And maybe a fourth.
They got a fourth one, too.
Yeah.
If anybody stated a Halloween expression-
We got another one.
And we know what the only two, the only thing that two lawyers can agree on.
It's not to agree.
The third one sucks, but anyway. Our words to that effect, but-
There you go.
You know, this is very complicated, and, and my friends in the medical profession will say that, that they don't like to do curbside consultations, especially on things like brain surgery or heart surgery.
Right.
And this is akin to that, but I'll, I'll just say this, an A and R does not necessarily lock in zoning.
Correct.
Uh, there's, there are a series of cases that talk about the reasons why one can get an A and R, it doesn't necessarily do anything other than delineate the existence of a lot, it doesn't make it a buildable lot, it, it doesn't do anything.
Exactly.
That's probably as far as I wanna go without actually looking into this.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, that's my opinion, and I think it's been right along, so I'm not so sure that they've done what they did, now, if you file a plan prior to it, they'd be under the old zoning, and even if they dragged their feet about it, and it took a whiles or whatever, they'd be locked into that zoning, even though we changed the thing next week, okay, and it gets approved, they'd still be locked in, but without a plan, without something saying, this is what we're gonna do, they have no grandfather.
Blue Wave actually has submitted plans as well.
Well, if they submitted a plan that says, this is the solar field we wanna put on here, that's one thing, if there's no plan, they don't have any grandfather.
I don't think the other two, Makepeace had plans in place, Blue Wave has, has plans.
If they have a plan, then they are, but if they don't, then they, they don't.
Yeah, because they're going before conservation, and then ZBA. Yeah, because they're going before conservation and then ZBA.
Right.
Sorry, well.
You know, I've been through this a million times. Sorry, Alan, to interrupt, but I just wanted to try to make that.
Yeah, I think, I think we've chewed on this bone enough in public.
It's, it's a land rush, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, next, some of my stuff for the day.
So that's Liaison Initiative Reports. Do you all set?
I got more.
You got more?
I was busy. Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, we had our annual meeting in Boylston. It was a, we had about sixty Selectmen. I would have liked to see more. We went over a bunch of different projects and stuff. There was a CQ program discussing how to present issues to the public in a clear, concise manner. I think I failed on that one again. But it, it worked out really well. For the Selectmen that got there, they got a lot of output out of it. We had the NPO meeting today, which is basically a transportation group for SERPED for twenty-eight communities in southeast Mass. And there were certain things discussed, as usual. And these are transportation programs for the region, how they're approved. And there was a couple of things that came up. There's a new program called GEO DOT, which is a new program in which anybody wants to submit a road project or a transportation project, and probably some of the grant projects coming down the line are going to have to work with this particular computer program form, et cetera. The state's adopted it. It's in the process of fine tuning it. Basically, our director of municipal maintenance, town administrator, ITS manager, probably our director of finance, and also our director of planning and economic development are going to have to work with this. SERPED is going to offer training, you know, in office or here. They'll come down and train people on this. It's not, the woman who, who sat and showed how it works, ran through it like it was nothing, and everybody was sitting there with their mouth open, like, what's going on? But unfortunately, it probably will work great once it's done, but this is the only way it's going to be done going forward. Starts actually in November, which is really crazy. I've mentioned to Derek already, that the SERPED is looking for new projects, small-size scale, to possibly get into the TIP program for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. I had a resident ask about the possibility of a speed traffic study, an onset down by Lopes Playground. There is a small community technical study program available from SERPED. They have a few openings. They may be able to do this. We'll find out shortly on that. And they're moving ahead on the work on the Route six study for Fairhaven, all the way through to Wareham, on the possibility of taking Route six from a two-lane per-side road to a one-lane highway on each side, you know, developing, you know, complete street, bike pack, et cetera.
Really?
Mattapoisett and Marion were the ones that initiated this. We basically agreed to go in with this with a stipulation that it wouldn't cost us anything as far as adopting the highway or anything. It would stay with the state, and Fairhaven's about to also, from the east side of Fairhaven, to join this as well. So it'd be an interesting project. See how it goes. Board of Health was asking for, they have these trailers that NEMA supplies with carts, and all kinds of supplies for emergency situations. I got a call, if I could ask if, you know, SERPED can work something out for our Board of Health. They just actually did exactly this, and finished it about a week ago, and they did six of these units spread over the state. One is the one that actually got in our area, but there's a possibility that we could get one also. So they'll be contacting Mr. Ethea to see what happens there. And I think that's all I did today.
Thank you, okay. Let's see, consent agenda. I think all we have on here is exact minutes from last week.
Make a motion to accept the executive minutes of October tenth, twenty seventeen, and to hold.
Okay. Motion to approve and hold by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. And now for the final motion of the night.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you, and good night, Wareham.